I call this meeting of the Thompson Select Board to order. In Thompson Municipal Building, the Donnelly Russell Meeting Room, and it's September sixteenth, excuse me, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Joshion. All right, last town manager to call roll.
Matt Nixon.
President.
And Callahan.
Oh, excuse us.
Roland Tufts.
Yeah.
Marie Nixon.
Nixon.
Before I start a scandal. And Ryan Holt.
I am here, thanks for getting that right. Bye Nixon.
Don't quit your day. All right, first up, town manager's report.
Absentee voting for the November election will begin on October sixth at Town Hall. On the ballot will be two select board seats, one MSAD seventy-five seat, voting on the four Union Park TIF, and a nine binding referendum on whether to allow sale of recreational cannabis in town. The Frank J. Woodbridge will become one-way going towards Brunswick on Monday, likely for the rest of the time that it's open. It will be closed completely for up to six nights at some point in the next ninety days. We hope to begin paving Elm Street sidewalks before the end of the month as that project closes in on completion. The street itself will also be repaved before we're finished. Forside Field Parking Lot is almost complete. The remaining step is to pave a strip from the Forside Road to the Riverside Field Gate. And the Tedford Road Culvert Project's progressing well, the new culverts in, and the backfill and water and sewer line installation process has started.
That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, next item, Board and Committee Reports and Updates. Uh, tonight we have an update on the Thompson Library and Catherine Weber, Director, will make her presentation.
Just to make sure, all of my connections are working. Do I need to turn on this one? Perfect, thank you.
Awesome, again.
Okay, so I can't see my notes if it's gonna be big screen, so can everyone see that okay? Okay, reasonably well at least, all right, excellent. Hi, uh, my name is Catherine Weber, I'm the Director of the Thompson Public Library, um, and I'm here tonight to give an overview of how the last fiscal year at the library went. So let's start off strong, the first victory of the year didn't have too much to do with us, but was actually the culmination of a ton of work through the state library, um, and other resources. We brought interlibrary loan back to the people, yay! Um, very exciting, people were very happy to have that back, so that was one of our, um, uh, big accomplishments for the year. So we were happy to be able to provide that service to our patrons once again. Um, the second thing that we did is the, we replaced the AWE learning computers, which are featured here in this image. Um, these are computers that contain learning games for kids, they combine educational like fun or education activities with fun, so you can do everything from learning to draw and paint, it has math activities, um, science activities, chemistry, all kinds of different things. And there are fifteen-minute increments, so the kids aren't like glued to the computer for the entire time, so that's another feature the parents really like. Um, the ones that we replaced were ten years old, so they were just aging, um, and we opted to get new ones, and, uh, we had over sixteen hundred sessions on those various computers over the course of the fiscal year, so that was pretty exciting. Um, we don't have statistics compared to last year unfortunately, because this is the new version which allows us to actually track those things, so we should have a comparison for this year. Um, when our former Assistant Director Cindy Byrne retired, we hired our new Assistant Director, Steve Bouchard, and, uh, around the same time, our Gallery Coordinator at the time left to take on a new position, so we hired a new Gallery Coordinator, Kelsey Bosberg, as well. Um, and then while we were undergoing a lot of changes, we decided to create a new Teen Services Librarian Position. This had previously, those duties had been shared under the previous Assistant Director, and it just made more sense to sort of split those out, so that's a new part-time position that we created, um, and is staffed by Lindsay Carnes, who's phenomenal. Um, through all of this work and all of the work that Lindsay did when she was onboarded and all the work, uh, Ms. Mariah, our Children's Librarian, does throughout the year, we were able to form some better connections to the schools because we had a little bit more time with the teen librarian being its own position. Um, so they were able to do things like be invited to attend, um, open houses and things like that at the schools. The librarians were able to go and meet the kids, and there was a seminide that they attended, there was a big like reading event that they attended. They were able to make connections with the librarians at the schools and sort of shore up whatever they're working on with the kids, which was really great. Um, and Mariah actually does a storytime at one of the local preschools now too, so we're really branching out to make sure that everyone has the literacy services, um, that they, that they need, and that we can help to support the work that they're doing in the community. Uh, the biggest thing that we accomplished, um, was the creation of our new long-range plan, so I brought three copies of that, if you haven't seen it on our website. Um, this was a culmination of a lot of different things, um, and we did community surveys, we did staff surveys, we talked to people whenever in the building. Um, we sort of dug deep into what we wanted the future of the library over the next three years to look like, what were our goals, what do we want to work towards? So I'll dive into that a little bit more later on in the presentation as well. Plot point, so this is everyone's favorite thing, I'm sure, is statistics, maybe that's just me, I really like them. Um, so, uh, the library had over five thousand cardholders throughout the course of the fiscal year. We had forty-nine thousand three hundred and forty annual visits, so these are people coming into the building. Some of that, of course, is duplication, there's people that come every week, there's people that come once a month, et cetera. Um, we own over fifty-one thousand items, and we circulated those items over one hundred and fourteen thousand times. Uh, so that's a pretty impressive number, and that is pretty much putting us at the benchmark from where we were pre-COVID, which is a great accomplishment for us to get the circulation numbers back up. We had five hundred and thirty-three programs offered, we had Usana Passives checked out two hundred and fourteen times. Um, our amazing tech help, uh, guy, tech guru Dale, uh, was able to help people three hundred and eighty-seven times, and those are the ones that he just tracked. That doesn't include people just wandering up to the desk and needing help like doing printing from their phone. Um, it doesn't include people who need help scanning to email, all of the small things that we're doing in additional help throughout the day. Um, and then finally, we had over thirteen thousand, we had thirteen thousand one hundred combined Wi-Fi connections and public computer uses, which is pretty cool. Um, the photo that's featured here is also pretty important, so one of Lindsay's ideas was to put on a box with all these cute paper hearts that basically was like, tell us what you love about the library, what are we doing well, what do you love about us? Um, the majority of it came back as like, we love the staff, they're super helpful, they're super friendly, they make me feel welcome, they make me feel at home. Um, so that's always a big win for us to hear how much people are enjoying the, the staff here at the library. Programming, okay, so we did a ton of programming, so as I mentioned in the previous slide, we did over five hundred programs. Our attendance, um, we had over eleven thousand five hundred attendees across all of our programs and events throughout the last fiscal year. Um, that's up thirteen point five percent from the last fiscal year, so it was bigger and better, we love that. Uh, we did everything from our normal like book groups and storytimes, which are classics, they're classics for a reason, we love to do them. Um, we have our, um, adult book discussions, there was a new teen book group, all of those sorts of things. In addition to that, we started, um, a collaboration to have a new online poetry podcast, which was really cool, so we had a ton of, um, listens for that poetry podcast. In addition to a ton of events throughout April, where we actually invited local poem, poets to come and read their poems and discuss them either together with other people that came to the event, all that sort of good stuff. And then we had a teen poetry walk, so we actually had teens from Mount Ararat submit poetry to be hung in the library. People could come, they could walk to the library, read the poems, they had a reception for it, it was a lot of fun. Um, so we really liked that aspect of all of those. In addition to that way that we included schools, we did an art exhibit with our elementary schools, which was really cool. So this was in addition to all the art that we have hanging throughout the year, we had woven rugs, we've had, um, plein air artists, we've had all kinds of different things, but this one was really special because we had over almost two hundred people, I think it was, attend the reception for this event, so it was like full to bursting with all of the families and friends and everything that had come to see these kids' art hanging on the wall, and that's, um, one of the pictures that's featured here. There were some really cool pieces, there were some three D pieces, there was a lot of like, um, self-portraits, which was really fun. So in addition to that type of programming, we were doing things like, we started a new film club. So there was a community member who came over and was like, hey, I want someone to talk to mo, like, talk to about movies, what can we do for that? So a couple of staff members put their heads together, created a film club, they choose a new film every single month and dispel it at the next meeting. Um, the only homework is to watch the movie, uh, which is pretty cool. Uh, and so that's been really popular. We have our normal like discussion groups, we've had presentations on, um, the main Native American experience, we've had presentations on the Pajak Scout Waterfall, we've had presentations on watersheds and climate change. Uh, we've had history discussions about Thompson and the buildings that it contains and all the different structures that are somehow still standing uh, and have stood the test of time, which is really cool. Um, the other picture that's featured here is the ever-popular Big Truck Day, right? So Public Works is very kind to us, they come down, they bring their trucks, the fire department brings their trucks. This year, Garver, um, the police dog, got to do a visit, which was really wildly popular. I'm pretty sure he fell asleep five minutes in and didn't wake up the entire time, um, but the kids absolutely loved it. So it was very wonderful to have this wonderful collaboration between all the town departments have, um, come visit us, and I believe we had almost five hundred people attend, which was really cool. Um, of course, we always have music in March, that's another big popular one for us. This year, we featured a rock band, which was kind of a big deal, it was very, very loud, but they kindly provided, um, earplugs for people, which was really cool. Um, we also had classical music, we had ukuleles, we had a whole bunch of different stuff, so tons and tons of programming, uh, there's always something happening at the library. So let's get into the needed things, expenditures. So this was the amount of money that we spent for our total, um, budget year, it was one million four thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. As you can see, the bulk of that was spent on staff wages, insurance, benefits, um, not just insurance for the people, obviously that's important, but also for like the building and, and things of that nature. Um, followed closely, not, I mean, not closely, but, uh, the next category that we spent the highest amount in is materials and programs, right? So this is something that is the, is the meat and potatoes of the library, it's what we have in the building, it's the per, it's all the programs that I just listed, it's all those sorts of things. So we spent over a hundred and five thousand dollars on all of that. Then we have the boring stuff, the contract supplies, utilities, building upkeep, all that sort of good stuff. So that was our total expenditures for the year. And then getting more, um, granular, if we're looking at the town appropriation, so in total for town funds this year, we spent eight hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Again, the majority of that was taken out by staff benefits and wages, um, followed by our building upkeep, utilities, all those sorts of things the town is, is typically paying for. Um, and then materials, technologies, the town participates in supporting the materials and technology of the library, which is important. And then finally, our supplies, advertising, other miscellaneous charges. All right, but let's talk about a long-range plan for a minute. So, um, I, again, I do have copies if anyone here wants one. Um, I'm just gonna do a brief overview of what the four goals that we're aiming for completion over the next three years. So the first goal is to make the library into a more welcoming and accessible community destination. A lot of the feedback that we received was like, well, we really like the library, but we're not really sure how to like use the outdoor space, like you have a garden, but they're like, other than wandering around, like, what do we do, is there something more that we can be offering? Um, is there a way that we can do outdoor programming? That was a surprisingly large number of people that wanted to see that happen, so finding a way to best use the total amount of space, which also is very unusual for libraries to have the land that we do, we're very lucky in that regard. Um, and so we want to be able to use that in the best way possible. The second goal is to provide improved access to a collection of physical and digital materials that better meets community expectations. Um, so this is, um, essentially people saying they want a collection that's a little bit more tailored to the individual needs. There were some people, um, in the survey that we took of the community that felt like there was more that we could be doing to meet their own specific informational or educational needs. And so we're gonna be exploring things like, maybe we need another digital platform, maybe there's, um, movie streaming, maybe there's music streaming, maybe there's something else out there that can help to supplement what we're already offering. Goal three is to enhance the community's engagement with programs. So this is always a goal that we have, we want to have something that's appealing to all kinds of different age groups. Um, you know, I said we had over five hundred programs, which is amazing, but we want to make sure that that's also offering something that everyone is interested in attending, right? So making sure that people also know what programs we're having is important because too often we'll hear from people like, oh, I didn't realize you were doing that, or I didn't know you had that program, whatever the case may be. So finding a way to enhance that in people's minds, um, make it more visible and important. And finally, the last goal that we have is to leverage our community partnerships and outreach to provide more opportunities for residents of all ages and abilities to connect with the library. So this is something similar to how we're making connections with the school. We also want to be connecting with people who maybe can't come to the library for one reason or another. Is it having to do with outreach and making more deliveries at home? Is it just exploring how we can better make people better understand our digital options and how those can be accessed from home without having to come into the building, right? So just figuring out if there's community partners that we can work with to deliver like monthly calendars, can we put them up at local businesses? Um, so the, this could be done in a variety of different ways. Um, so we're gonna be exploring all of those options in addition to continuing our connections with the schools, building those relationships, that's something that was also really important to the people who took the community survey. They wanted us to be more active in the schools and making those connections. And finally, the last thing I have is an ask. If you're available, we would love to see you all come to our open house, which is happening on Saturday, October eighteenth at the library, from ten AM to twelve PM. Um, and that's open to everyone, we're gonna be talking about some of the services and resources we offer, there's gonna be a chance to win library swag. Um, so that's always fun, um, so we're just really looking forward to welcoming the community once again, um, into our building and, uh, sort of letting them know what we're up to and, and getting feedback from them if there's something they'd like for us to be doing. All right, any questions?
You mentioned the, the enrollment or number of visitors is not up to where it's basically where it was for pre-pandemic.
Hmm, the circulation has not.
Circulation, sorry. Um, but you think it, some of that is correlated to the fact you have new programs, they're attracting new people, or?
It's hard to say, it could be. What we've been finding is actually even though our visitors aren't quite at the same level, what we're finding is people are coming less frequently but taking out more materials at once. So people maybe who used to come twice a week are now only coming once a week, right? But every time they're coming, they're taking out about the same number of materials, which has actually been really interesting. Um, and I didn't quite believe it when I first saw the numbers, but as I talked to staff and as I talked to some of our volunteers and trustees, they're like, no, that's definitely true. Every time I come, I find myself checking out more in case we're unexpectedly trapped at home again. Um, so there could be a variety of factors, it could also be new programming is pulling people in. Um, it could be that there's something that's, we're doing now that we weren't doing pre-COVID. I wasn't here pre-COVID, so I can't really speak to that, but there's always a variety of factors that play with it.
Do you think demographically it's about the same, or are, do you think, is it trending younger, is it trending older, any, anything just from observation?
I'm not sure, to be honest, um, again, because I wasn't here pre-COVID, it's kind of hard for me to gauge, but I would gather it's probably about the same because the population of the town hasn't changed too much in the last five years, so, um, I can't say for certain.
That's great, also, I like the stats.
Yeah, thank you, good, I'm glad I'm not the only one.
I, I liked them too, I had one question about them, um. One note that I put down was that you guys had five hundred and thirty-three programs that you offered this year?
Yeah.
Um, I, my mind was blown because I think that's just a huge number of programs, um. Can you highlight what you guys were considering programs or some of the programs there, because I mean, tried to quicken that three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, you're, you're running two programs a day, seven days a week, and that's, you know, it's a busy time, so.
Sure.
Oh, are they, are you considering the programs that meet Monday, Wednesday, Friday, let's say, as one program, or every day that a program's run is a different program?
Every day a program runs a different program, we don't typically have the same program that runs daily, other than maybe like tech help, but that's not considered to be a program. Um, but oftentimes, we do have like multiple storytimes in a day, or we'll have like a kids program in the morning, a teen program in the afternoon, an adult program at night. We also have weekend programs, so it's a whole host of different things. It also includes things like, we have, um, a fiber arts club that meets, and they usually meet like once a month, they meet in the mornings, and then oftentimes, sometimes we'll have like an event in the afternoon or the evening, um, yeah, so.
So it's not necessarily five hundred and thirty-three different programs, it's a lot of the same programs running on repeat.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great job.
Awesome, thank you all so much.
Appreciate it. All right, other comment, anything? Correspondents, nothing? That's most of the agenda, there are none. All right, next up, consent calendar. Approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting held September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, I have motion.
So.
Second?
Second.
Wow. I'm scared going in here, I'm scared, hold on a few seconds. Envious. Next up, uh, we have a public hearing. Twenty-five eighty, public hearing on the Four Union Park TIF application on the non-executing, November tw- twenty-twenty-five town meeting warrant. So this is going to be a chance for the public to speak, uh, at the end of this, there's no vote or anything, it's, but it's just an opportunity for the board to hear from, you know, from the public, um, and, you know, while you learn a bit more about, you know, what, what's the tale, so. Um, the town manager will be walking us through it.
Uh, the town attorney has asked that we do the public hearing in two pieces. So the first part of the, first part of the public hearing is on, "The First Amendment to the Downtown and Transit-Oriented Omnibus Municipal TIF and Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program," um, referred to as the Downtown and Transit-Oriented District, "seeks to remove three point eight-two acres from the downtown omnibus district in order to allow for a new affordable housing district." Uh, so essentially what this is, is the second public hearing that we'll have is about the Affordable Housing TIF that's been proposed. Uh, but the land that will be part of that TIF is currently in another TIF. Um, it's in a, it's called a municipal TIF, means none of the money is shared with anyone other than the town. Um, so to the extent that we shelter revenue from that TIF that goes for certain approved purposes that are, um, for the town. Uh, this property actually currently does not generate any TIF funds for the town in it, uh, because the property's decreased in value since this TIF was established. Um, it's a, currently consists of a commercial building that was the former Meti Kabe building, uh, before they moved out or and, uh, or mostly moved out, and the property has depreciated. So we'll be taking property out of a TIF that doesn't, um, currently generate any TIF revenue for us. Uh, and that's pretty much it for what that part of this is.
Right, so just, you promise and swear it?
Right.
Yeah. Or anyone have any comments they'd like to share?
This would be on the removal of the property from the current TIF, and then in a second, we'll get on to the, the proposed new TIF.
Okay, I don't see any now, nothing online? All right, we'll move on to the second one.
So the second TIF, uh, or the second public hearing is for the designation of the Union Park Road Affordable Housing Tax Increment Financing District. This is referred to as the Union Park Road AHTIF District. An adoption of a development program. The Union Park Road AHTIF District consists of approximately three point two acres of property. The program authorizes the town to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with the developer as listed in the development program. So the same three point eight-two acres, uh, that were part of the old TIF or proposed to be part of this new one is an affordable housing TIF. Um, this TIF is expected to have an apartment building built on it that will be assessed or worth approximately forty million dollars. At our fiscal year two thousand twenty-five tax rate, that would result in about five hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. Uh, the developers represented that without the TIF, they can't afford to do the project, or if they do, all the apartments would have to be at market rate. The proposed TIF would refund sixty percent of the taxation that results from the TIF back to the developer over the thirty-year period of the TIF. Um, so applying this year's, or the two thousand twenty-five tax revenues, it means of the five hundred thousand that we would receive, we're refunding approximately three hundred thousand of it back to the developer. The town would keep the forty percent of the revenues, the town would get approximately two hundred thousand a year, um, in revenue from this building. What we did with our Bowden interns this summer is we tried to figure out what's the quote-unquote true cost of the town was in the TIF. Uh, what happens with a tax increment financing district is the value of the property in that district is sheltered or protected from being considered into such things as our, our assessed value for the county, which results in if we have a lower assessed value than we would have otherwise, we pay a lesser share of the county's taxes than we would otherwise. It also gives us a lesser value for SAD seventy-five school, uh, funding formula purposes. So if this property is sheltered in a TIF, we pay less, a lesser share of the SAD seventy-five budget than we would pay otherwise. It also is taken into account as far as revenue sharing and school aid to education, we get a slightly larger amount if the money, um, if the property is sheltered in the TIF. Our interns, uh, analysis of this was that we would be spending roughly of that five hundred thousand, if it was not in a TIF, we'd be spending roughly two hundred and eighty thousand of that either on increased county share, increased school share, or we would not as get as much revenue sharing or school aid to education. So in essence, the choices are, do we spend roughly twenty thousand, um, more, you know, some three thousand, three hundred thousand total, giving it to the developer? Or do we not put it in the TIF and we pay about two hundred and eighty thousand, uh, to school, county, and we that also, again, includes a little less revenue sharing and a little less, um, state aid to education. So the question is, what do we get for the twenty thousand dollars? Um, what we've negotiated with the developer is that in return for the, the, uh, the payment of the three hundred thousand, so of, but of really, it's twenty thousand that we wouldn't have been paying for these other purposes. Uh, we would get a third of the units as affordable housing. Um, ten of those units would be people affordable to no more than eighty percent of the area median income. Our TIF that we currently have for affordable housing at Hackham Attack Road is for people to make up to sixty percent of median income. Uh, but if you've got two people working, they may not qualify for that TIF. Um, this eighty percent, eighty to ninety range is something that's called the missing middle. Um, it's the area, maybe you've got two people in the household that are working, so they don't qualify for, say, the current TIF we've got, but they have trouble affording housing in Thompson if you're trying to keep your, um, housing expenses to thirty percent of your income. So we'd get ten units that would be for thirty years, that would be locked in at no more than eighty percent of, or rent is affordable by someone that makes no more than eighty percent of median income. And we get fifty-one units, uh, that would be locked in for thirty years, someone that's making no, affordable, someone making more, no more than hundred and twenty percent of their median income. So I've talked about the number of units, I've talked about the affordability. The remaining thing is revenues from a TIF can only be used for specific statutorily authorized purposes. Um, some of the purposes that we think, uh, would be attractive to Thompson that we could use the revenue for is, and the number one, one would be, you are allowed to use, if it's an affordable housing TIF, the TIF revenue to offset the cost of education of the students in the TIF. Um, so that money could go towards, that two hundred thousand we keep could go towards our MSAD seventy-five share, as long as we have enough kids in, in the TIF. Um, if we had roughly ten kids in the TIF, that would absorb all of the, the tax revenue that would, um, come from that. Other thing that we've proposed is you're allowed to use a proportionate share of public safety expenses that are related to the district. Um, if this isn't our first four-story building in town, it would be the second. Um, so a ladder truck is certainly important with a four-story building, we currently have a ladder truck. Um, and it's useful even for a one-story building if you want to fight the fire from above, but it becomes really essential for rescue and things if you have multiple, they have a four-story building, it's a lot harder to do that if you don't have a, a ladder truck. So we would propose that we would use, um, some of the revenue could be used for setup reserves to replace our ladder truck. Our ladder truck's probably gonna have to be replaced in the next ten years, um, so we could put aside some money to help pay for that out of this. Um, other purposes that we were asking for, uh, in Um, other purposes that we were asking for, uh, in this TIF would be a pro-rata share of water and sewer improvements. Um, there was a study you may have read or heard of a few weeks ago, uh, that was presented to the select board that Wright Pierce did that talked about, um, work that needs to be done in order for us to have development more in the Topsum Fair Mall area. Um, the former base, uh, housing at, at the, uh, near the schools or even across two ninety-five in the area that's available for development there. Um, we need, we'd need more water and sewer. This building itself would also contribute to the need for more water and sewer. So part of the TIF money could be used to help pay for the water and sewer improvements if we chose. Um, and also money could be used for street or traffic improvements on Union Park. And money could also be used to set, set up an affordable housing fund to help pay for other affordable housing from that tax money. So those are the five purposes. It would be up to town meeting each year to choose what we wanted to, to go to of those five. Um, and the, the easiest one and probably the one that we use the most, as I said, would be the offsetting cost of education. Um, another thing that's been proposed for this TIF, what the developer has agreed to, um, and we just need Main State Housing Authority to agree to as well, is that people working in Topsum, we get first preference for units, and people working within fifteen miles of Topsum would get second preference. Um, all of the above, the purposes, the preference, um, is subject to approval of the Main State Housing Authority. Where we're at right now is we posted online drafts of the documents, um, that are probably ninety-five percent finished between the attorneys agreeing to them. And our attorney is now sharing it with the Main State Housing Authority to get their input and things. Uh, the final application wouldn't get put in when and if, uh, until it gets approved at, uh, the vote in November. Um, but that's kind of the, essentially, that's in both of it, and, uh, we have, tonight we have with us the consultants for the developer, Jim Demikas, as well as the proposed developers to answer questions. And, um, we also get two pieces of written testimony in advance, um, that the proponents or the people that wrote the testimony asked to have read out loud, and with your permission, I would read the first one. Um, this is from Gail Eaton at fifty Granite Hill Drive. Uh, Gail said, as we are all aware, there is a housing shortage everywhere. Topsum is not an exception. To add a hundred and eighty-three units to this area to help alleviate the shortage is very good and needed course of action. Um, for the short-term loss of twenty thousand for a few years by granting the TIF out of projected revenues in excess of six million, um, it's a small price to pay for a hundred and eighty-three housing units, especially when ten of the units were available to those making less than eighty percent of the area's median income, and fifty-one would, would be available to those making less than a hundred and twenty percent of their is median income. We as taxpayers should do as much as possible to support increasing the number of housing units available here in Topsum. Um, and the second one was from Kurt Newfeld, and Kurt, I don't know if you'd rather speak in person or have me read your.
Hi Kurt Newfeld, fourteen minutes, we need drive. I'm also here on behalf of, uh, TBI. If you all post on our sound of this, I think it's a great opportunity for the town, and I really appreciate the fact that it's select board has worked with the developer over several months of meetings to, uh, negotiate the deal that I think is a win-win compromise, so nobody gets what they want a hundred percent. But, uh, I repeat, you know, what Gail said, we need housing. This is an opportunity for a lot of housing to happen at once, right, open three lots in the residential subdivision every year. Um, I think it's great that we'll have opportunities for, um, the folks who, you know, don't have earning power, spending power. Um, we did have a report, uh, TBI Health Commission a few years ago for Kamoi. They identified that over, uh, something like a five-year period, the town could absorb over three hundred units of, uh, housing between rental and single family. And this is a big step towards that. So it's a media documental goal. Um, and I think the, uh, the fact that we're gonna have more residents, uh, they're gonna be shopping, eating, you know, in our neighborhood, in our town, it's gonna be helping offset some of that tax numbers, probably won't make up all of it. Uh, but mostly I think it's important that we look ahead to meet the housing demands, uh, grow our population in a responsible manner, and, uh, I just wanted to say I appreciate what the town select board has done on this. That's it. Basically, it's a good project, and we'll be everyone for the town, assuming against ass all the rest of the permitting issues.
Sorry.
Take other, um.
Yeah, so at this, at this point, we will open it up for public comments. So if anyone has any comments, please stand up and state your name and what your thoughts are. Heard it all, I guess, huh? Like I said, we, we're not getting a vote on this tonight, but we really wanted to, uh, at least give you a better idea of what's in this plan and, uh, you know, something to look forward to as we approach, you know, the next election. So thanks again for coming and listening to this.
And I guess, assistant town manager said there's no one online that wishes to come in either.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, unfinished business, none, old business, none, on to new business. Twenty-five eighty-one, consideration any appropriate action to approve a new charge from the Energy Committee.
Bring Nick Watley up.
Yeah, so Nick Watley.
Stephanie Gardner. Jackie Price.
Ones that have left, we lost a couple of people lately, okay? Um, but, uh, yeah. So, uh, I just thought, I mean, you all probably read the charges that we submitted. Um, just wondered if you have questions or want to discuss your particular parts of it.
I just for the audience, could you just sort of provide something, a summary?
I, I can take a step of that. Um, so there's just, there's a couple of elements, it's, you can kind of think of it as divided into two different parts. Um, the first part would be, um, supporting the planning board, um, and the town general um, in regards to the battery storage project that's been proposed for the vis in harm location. Um, so we just wanted to offer our assistance in terms of research, um, educational outreach, uh, we're really, wherever we can be most helpful, um, in that regard. That's kind of the first portion, um, and then the second portion is, uh, more related to the, um, community outreach, uh, now that there's three of us, uh, we want to make sure that the committee is, uh, visible uh, to the community, uh, and that we are able to, um, offer some programming that helps out. Um, for example, we could offer some, uh, webinars or in-person educational sessions around energy efficiency, um, or other things that we could pull from the Climate Action Plan that was approved by, uh, the town meeting in May, um, and just kind of keep the ball rolling on what, what is the most important thing to the community and getting that opportunity for feedback. Missing anything at first?
May I give a little?
Absolutely.
Uh, so tonight, um, you've heard, I guess, a, would be a twofold charge. So one would be to help assist with the, um, drafting of the uh, ordinance changes needed for the, to establish battery entry storage, and then you've heard community education relative to the Climate Action Plan. I think those are both useful things, um, and I would be assigning myself to be the staff member to work with the committee, uh, because I've kind of been doing a lot of work on the battery storage thing. You should, tonight, if you want to give them a charge and they've asked for the term basically two years or till, um, May of twenty-seven, I'd also need to establish how many members. I don't know if you've given any thoughts of how many you would like, is this five or seven, or I don't know, do you have a preference, or?
We're shooting for, for five, minimum five, maximum seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, what we could do is, if you chose to give them a charge tonight, because they have seven members.
One to the minimum, I feel like we have three people right now.
Oh. Minimum of three. Uh, we've got to start from somewhere. Got to start somewhere.
Right.
Well, that's great. No problems. You want to make a motion?
Yes, I'm thinking about the wording, and I think you, you probably had the perfect motion.
Not really, no. I'm gonna make a motion, um, to uh, renew the charge for the Topson Energy Committee until May of two thousand twenty-seven, um, with the two primary bins of activity being advisory capacity for the grid scale battery storage ordinance and financial details. Um, to work with, find department, et cetera, as needed, uh, and then to continue their work um, around the Topson Climate Action Plan, um, which in this case would involve three educational sessions. Period.
With the town manager being the, being the town's liaison.
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept the friendly amendment, yes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Second, all in favor?
That include your maximum number of seven, I have, it's very long, seven. People.
Okay. All in favor then? All right, thank you very much. You'll be hearing the town manager. All right. Thank you.
Who was the second on that one? Nick Ray.
Did you get the seven?
Yeah, I get the rest.
All right, next item, twenty-five eighty-two. Consideration any appropriate action regarding TDI requesting approval to hire consultant to develop funding ideas for water and sewer improvements.
Andy Sturgeon.
Evening Chair, Select Board Staff, my name is Andy Sturgeon, I'm Chair of TDI. Uh, if you remember, not too long ago, I made a presentation with the infrastructure study that we had commissioned by Wright Pierce, and, and, uh, there was quite a um, amount of money that's tied into that, so I can't know the exact numbers, but I think it was around thirty, thirty million dollars, so. The question is, and then again, setting back that thirty million was different variations of, of improvements that we could do in different areas of the community. But the question is, how do we fund that? Obviously, part is gonna come from the developers that develop in those areas, but what other funds are available to from from a, a federal standpoint, from a state standpoint, from a community, uh, even a county standpoint? So we're, you know, we scratched ahead, talked to some people and said, how are we gonna identify these possible, um, resources for funding and improvements, and it was, it was, uh, brought to my attention, we should um, reach out to some consultants and see what they had for proposals. We get a couple of proposals and one of them, the TDI board, um, endorsed, and that's the one that was sent to you in the package received, and it's a proposal from Larochelle Consulting, it's for fifteen thousand dollars. And it, it outlines her scope of work in trying to identify and work with the community to, to, uh, see how we can, um, possibly fund part of the infrastructure improvements and, um, we felt as a board that this was a solid proposal, and, and as a group, noise it coming before you to get your, your support for this move forward. Any questions? We're here. Also with me tonight is Mike and Kurt from the TDI board, if we have further questions.
Traditionally, how has this funding occurred within the town?
Traditionally?
Yeah, just in terms of past projects that have been implemented.
Well, I have the biggest project we've ever had is the seventy-five thousand, we spent, we commissioned Wright Pierce to do the infrastructure study, but um, we've had various different, um, projects over the last, I don't know how many years that TDI has been in existence, but, um, if you're asking the process, I guess it's, we go through the, the TDI board, we get a recommendation, come to the board, and, and, uh, I think for example, we, uh, recently did a, a survey of the, of Topson Fair Mall Road and that access. And we have on file a study of all the assets of that should we decide to go forward with some improvements on the Topson Fair Mall as a community. And I think that ties in with other, other studies that, that they've done in the past too, so it's a, it's a just an agglomeration of a few studies. Um, I haven't seen anything, in my opinion, that's been exorbitant cost, fifteen thousand. Now, I, I guess maybe it's for, it's like, maybe ten thousand, but when you look at the, the, uh, potential for the, the development of, of this area, and the, we, um, remember the infrastructure study included, um, improvements on the west side of two ninety-five and four, with many side, and I think altogether, you're talking one hundred, two hundred, three hundred million dollars that's developed. And how we fund that is, is very important, and I think fifteen thousand is reasonable.
Well, that was really my question, was how much, what's the, what's the number tied to this overall project, right? I mean, the consultancy is like, this is, that's funding that you need, but you know, if you're gonna end up on a three hundred million dollar project, you just want to make sure you've got, to your point, someone who's qualified and understands, you know, what we're looking to do.
Well, we, we feel that this, this proposal is identifying and identifying potential sources of income, but of course, the developer and their funds and their engineers and their studies are gonna play a much bigger role. This is just kind of helping us get our hands around, how can we work with you, Mr. Developer? And we, and we do have some developers that are in the community right now, reaching out to the town and some of, some of us consultants. Now, how can we develop, for example, the west side, how can we, how can we, um, use that study that you've produced, or how can we get sewer water over to the west side? And they don't always align with what might be best for the big picture for the community. It might be, we might have a proposal that comes in front of us from a developer on the west side that was just, just focused on dinner needs.
Right.
And maybe it isn't the best needs of the community, so we're trying to find, find that, that win-win situation for us on the west side, east side, and the future development of our Topsum. Again, it's, it's a, it's a potential um, uh, many, whatever you want to call it, the intersection of, of exit thirty-one and two ninety, two ninety-five. So I just look at it as a lot of opportunity, and I don't see fifteen thousand today as being that um, out of line from our.
No, I agree.
So this, um, sorry, girl.
No, no, I just.
With this fifteen thousand, you know, we're talking about a large project, and it is my feeling that inevitably it will happen in our lifetimes, and probably sooner maybe rather than later, who knows, but it will happen. Um, it is a large-scale project, this is why it hasn't been done for so long, because it is such a, a massive amount of money to actually do this upgrade. This consultant's sole purpose is to research the funding opportunities. They're not applying for those, uh, those grants for us or anything, they're just identifying ways that we could help share the cost to bring that thirty million down. Am I assuming that correctly?
I guess one can bring it down to see how it is, is funded.
Or the state, the state of taxpayers.
Most of these aren't grants, they're loans. But we can pay with that, so that's an important nuance that.
Well, this is, I guess what I'm getting at is, paying somebody to find ways to help a taxpayer offset a taxpayer burden is what they're trying to accomplish. Is that more accurate or no?
Um, I, I look at it, there, there are so many resources and funds today. And whether they're loans or grants or, um, uh, tools that developers can use themselves to help them fund their projects. It's, it's a big, it's a big net, and you're throwing it out there and you're trying to grab what might be out there for opportunities. We don't know, Wright Pierce identified some possible funding structures when they did their study. This is, and that was, in my opinion, a narrow net, which is saying, we want to take a bigger net, find out what's out there to help everybody. I mean, for example, you look at Augusta and you look at Gardner, they've thrown these communities a lot of money into some recent developments in their communities. I'm not saying Topsum wants to go to the level that Augusta or Gardner did, for whatever reason, um, but I think we need to know what's available. What's out there, and I just don't think ten thou, uh, fifteen thousand dollars is a huge amount when when you look at the big picture, and you look at our resources, what is TDI supposed to, what, what, what is our charge? Just to help the economic, what are the economic arm of the town of Topsum? Um, collectively, this board has two hundred and fifty years of economic experience, and we look at how are we gonna help the town grow in a responsible manner, help us um, pay for our costs as a community, for the taxpayers, in the, in the best manner, and I, I just feel this fifteen thousand was, was. Pay for our costs as a community for the taxpayers in the best manner, and I I just feel this fifteen thousand was a was a. Responsible spend to look at those options.
I I think I'm in agreeance with you, I just I'm trying to. Figure out the the scope of this work and then try to find a way to word it to say, we're spending fifteen thousand dollars now, but if an investor or. A real estate, a real estate developer, developer in general comes and says, we got to build this, but we only have. Twenty of the thirty million, we can then go back to the potential and say, ah, but we have this something available that you can take care of that might. Save you that ten million and it might help secure a deal, but at least that could be one way of looking at it or finding other possibilities. To say, well, it would cost thirty million, but there's there's some other ways here to bring that cost down for us as taxpayers. Certainly, I would hope that they would find something greater than a value of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Absolutely.
And that's the point.
That that is exactly the point, but it's in in probably in in stupid example, thirty million, twenty million, there's a ten million gap, how are we going to cover that gap? It's not going to be, it's going to be a. Bunch of issues that are going to come together to cover that ten ten million, it might get tipped, like we just talked about, I'm sure there'll be. A tip asked somewhere along the line, but it'll have to be proven to you to be fruitful to the community and. And how do we do that, that that would be an option, but there'll also be some funds and some grants from federal and state. Organizations that will help that, we hope to find those that will help that developer and help the community fund that infrastructure. Because it is a big potential for. A tax based increase, and we're talking the hundred, two hundred, three hundred million dollars of. Of potential development in that exit thirty one.
The. Money would be coming from the town or TDI?
TDI presently, I think we're at around three hundred million, somewhere around.
They invested well.
Then why are we doing this, just? Sewer and water over there.
We have about three hundred thousand in our in our what chest and this would be fifteen thousand, but we will take it out of that.
Traditionally, the way that money's been spent is the. TDI board, if they think something is a worthwhile, then they come to you as well and to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
It's just, it's a it's a. Collaboration of communication between you and us or. Two hundred and fifty years of experience that we have on the board with your experience with the current events and the community and seeing that it's a good fit. And I, we came here before just around the seventy five thousand for the infrastructure study, this is just a little bit of a tail end of. Kind of put some toes around now.
Back into the motion. Oh, I still got some questions, sorry, thank you. So in your response to Ryan, you wanted to know, you had said they'd be looking at different options, aside from the league that I listed here?
I mean, I can't remember memorize this. They would be looking at all kinds of options, I I'm not, I would have to go down through her eight and. And they have those exact ones that I think about, I don't know, but that's what a proposal would go down. If her proposal is for those eight, yeah, if there's anything extra, it would be collaboration of us talking. With Reagan, Reagan has a lot of experience, she's worked with developers throughout the state. She's actually, she is currently your. Just, she was a state representative.
Yep.
And she she became recommended to T I by an independent. Outside of T I, I know on the board, someone suggested we talk to her, we talked with a couple others and. We looked at the proposals and this seemed to be the most solid according to the board.
So I don't disagree with fifteen Ks, in the grand scheme of things, it's nothing. But when I'm looking at especially task two and three here, which is the meat of the proposal. And she's proposing to spend eight hours a day at a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour, so a thousand dollars a day researching each one of these particular funding opportunities. And I know for fact congressional directed spending, I mean, most websites, most of the delegation has their own template, if you just enter in the data and Google it's done, I mean, there's no research involved. Same goes for. The D E P Clean Water State Revolving, the D W B Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund, they have their own summary sheets right on the website, pretty sure the Fed's just got rid of. C V G, that's to be determined, same with D E A and. And the Water Infrastructure Finance and the Big Act are probably going to go away when EPA gets eliminated, so. There's, I guess my point is, that's the bulk of the money and it seems like it's a little expensive, at least to me, and I'm the town planner in North Haven, I've. Done a C V S, I've done two of these grant or these loan opportunities I should add. So it's just, I mean, eight hours and a thousand bucks per opportunity, and then, of course, note on the bottom here. It's expected that some of this money might be applied to the workshop, and if that's the case. I think it would have been better to have moved some of that eight or twelve thousand dollars. That might be applied to the workshop time in task five rather than say, she's going to be spending eight thousand dollars. To research or over the course of eight hours.
You're much deeper into than the I have time for.
Well, that's kind of my job.
I I can't, all I'm basing is on what she's presented, her history, her record and the advice of the board. Getting down to individual tasks and whether that's a fair price or not is is. More than I, you know, more than I have time for.
Were there other quotes or RFPs that you had returned that were greater or lower than this amount, or is this the only one?
They were low, but they were very. Not specific, I guess they were just, I'll do this job for five thousand dollars, or I'll do this job for eight thousand dollars and find you some. This is a, this is a scope of work that was more definitive, more that we felt comfortable with in the scope of work. And again, whether eight thousand, four thousand per task item is the correct price, I. I guess on basin, my. Supported that price on experience and recommendation from others who's their services. If you want, we can go out and go to an RFP and see if we can get something. Or four thousand dollars less, I don't know, it's just. You just felt comfortable with this proposal, and that's. I'm not second guessing your questions, I'm just saying, I just really get down to it and I'd be tipping. I don't know, Kurt, do you say anything relative to that? Was the RFP?
Not really, I could, I could see going backwards, people are writing, maybe with all the working detail on that again. We went outside because I don't have your experience, I really appreciate your perspective, I don't know what it takes to get a C V S, but maybe it's.
Takes a lot of wheel greasing, that's really what it comes down to, the application process and that.
Sure, so maybe there's something beyond, you know, the hours spent on like getting it, but I appreciate the perspective, maybe there's a little bit of a revisit we could do at this time.
The only thing I, the only thing I would add to that is, we're not, there's no gun to a head, it's, you don't. It's not like we have to have this go forward next month, it's just, if if you feel. As a board that we should dig a little deeper and try to get a little more. Scope and then we can do that.
I mean, I really hate to put a little pen in here, but.
I I know, and I'm with you, I'm with you on that too.
At the same time, I mean, I consult, this is, her rate is fantastic, one twenty five is great.
I know, so we go and get the hours reduced and the rate goes higher, well, heck, it's.
Do you know what the actual task two deliverables will be, I mean, she just mentioned the summary, but I mean, that I could be convinced, I mean, if we're talking about something. A little more robust than, you know, a two pager or.
Let me ask you this, man, I mean, it's it's, this is a board we're working with Reagan, would you be willing to enter into a discussion with her to try to get that? I mean, I I'd still love to have you endorse this and say, let's move forward, but at the same time have you. Sit down with me and Kurt and Reagan and say, give us a little more explanation on what you're going to do to make everybody feel comfortable.
I've got two meetings left, though, I'm going to warn you, then I'm off.
Well, you can always volunteer, right?
I gotta do, I mean, fifteen all this pay you.
No, I'd be happy to do, I think that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, we'll put it to.
And I do too, and I I would appreciate that, rather than holding us up and going through the magnitude of three meanings to say. If you would support our decision on this, yeah, we'll bring you in just. Or anybody else that's on on the select board that would want to enter in the discussion with Reagan to say. Give us a little more detail, once you do a little task number three or X number four, I don't, I'm very supportive of that, again, we're not in a rush.
You have my table. Have a conversation maybe next week, but after.
My 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 request would be that you support this and we go forward, but at the same time, we, before we we. Engage and set the process that will bring you in into the discussion. That would be my preference, so I don't have to take another night to come back to do this, just as, I mean, I, if you give us the support tonight, then we'll enter in a contract with her. Subject to a discussion that we have prior to that, but it's just, it's a. It's a situation where you're trusting me to bring you in and just make you feel comfortable, but at the same time, I I just don't think we're going to get a better deal. And how many times do we want to come up before here, before and before? What's my question, I guess. Love to have your interaction, and again, we're in no rush, but at the same time.
What do you want us to do tonight?
No, I just want you to. I want you to endorse our our our. Motion and our decision and move forward with this, that's what we're asking for, you're just, you're endorsing to support us and engage in a in a contract of. Larochelle Consulting and no more. You know, whatever the maximum amount is creeping down.
Yeah, I was going to say not to exceed.
Not to exceed, if you gave us that support, then we will go and and see if we can get some more detail, but again, we're not.
Certainly, if we spend a lot of money, you basically need to get this firm up so that, you know, she gives you an example of what research means and then, you know, have a discussion as to why it takes her eight hours versus plugging into a model.
As a consultant, this is exactly the kind of proposal I would love to just get a rubber stamp, right, eight hours, okay, done, eight thousand bucks right here, but I'd like to make a motion that. We support the T I proposal and funding contract not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, however. That is subject to discussion with the principal of the company prior to execution of the contract. For additional information, whoever on this board would like to join the conversation with Andy and Kurt and Miss Lab.
So the funding's being approved and the selection of the vendors is subject to additional research or additional conversations.
Not to exceed, and if we can figure out something with the consultant that, you know, I think satisfactory in terms of what.
Like a safe word, basically.
That's great, but if if you can't give a good answer, then, I mean. You get to figure something else out.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to, you know, if we're at a difference and we're sitting there, we're not going to move forward until we're, we're a team here, we're not. T I, I guess, it's like we're together representing the economic development opportunities for the town of Thompson.
Right. So is that your complete motion?
Yeah, it was a really long one, how about this? Mate, Mark already wrote it all down.
I'm glad he's doing it again.
The move that we allow T I or approve not to exceed capital fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to enter into a contract with Lab or Self Consulting. Contingent on a meeting to take place within the next month between T I representatives and select board and consultant, the principal of consulting firm. To discuss deliverables. And cost.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Are you just halfway through, I mean, October?
Thank you very much.
Twenty five eighty three, consideration of any appropriate appropriate actions to recommend a representative to the county budget advisory committee.
So the county.
He's here, he's here.
But the county administrator has reached out because our district for the county comprised of Bowden and Thompson. There's three district representatives in the county budget committee, two of which were from Bowden or will be from Bowden, and the third was. Select word member Nixon, who's, as we all know, is is mentioned, he may be leaving soon.
None of them.
So. We've been asked if we want, if you would like to select someone or propose, they actually get appointed by the county commissioners, but to propose someone to be selected. Which obviously would be heavily weighted as far as their approval. In addition, so right now, you've got. The three of you that are continuing, that are certainly potential candidates, I also sent an email out to our two candidates that are running unopposed. For office to see if they would have any interest, I'll let. Candidate Labby speak for himself, our other candidate Kenny said that he thought it might be better served by someone that had knew more about the process than he did. But he thinks it's important to have someone on the committee, so if no one else wanted to do it, he'd be willing to do it. And.
Sounds like a definitive yes.
Mike is here, it is.
Yeah. I should say no? Shut it off?
Yeah, you did.
We can't hear him. That's why I'm shutting off, he's the one who's fucking quiet. I am at a loss for wanting to, you know, I'm coming into new job as being selected. Again, if you're elected, there's always that worry there, but.
It could be right.
It could be right. The hard say, but anyways. I've been on the finance meeting in Thompson here for three years. I wasn't encouraged, what you told me, meaning to. That's not encouraging at all, so, ladies, buy your lunch, I give you that. So I am, I hate to commit to it. And Mr. Kenny, like Mr. Kenny says, he just, he wants to get his feet wet first before we go any further. I know what you got to do, I've been around a long time, I've come to several meetings on this side of the board. Now I'm going to that side of the board, and I'm not sure what I can handle yet, so. I don't want to say yes, but I'll keep my door open, I listen to it.
How often do they meet now, a lot? And it runs at the same period of time that we're doing.
But it's a lot, like twice a week?
Oh, it could all depends, like I said, the organization is not always the best, so sometimes we'll get through everything we need to, other times we won't, and it'll have to be, you know, another two or three meetings to get through everything. So you're talking about usually. I don't know, once a week for the month of February or March, somewhere around there. And that picks up pace, then you've got one full day meeting that can sometimes go into two, again, depending on how many questions are asked. And you're not not required to attend public hearings for the budget, but it's kind of suggested that you do. And then at the end of everything, the commissioners override your decisions and recommendations anyway, so.
That's what I was saying, that's that. They they didn't listen to any of our recommendations, so I'm saying.
No, I mean, I I'm being a little bit here, they, I mean, we got an issue with Cola a couple of years back, where they were proposing something like a fourteen percent raise or something ridiculous. And we were able to get them down to like. CBI. Plus like point two five percent or something, so they did listen. But that's really what the budget committee's job is, is to make sure that they're. Straight and narrow, that. I think with all. Public servants, myself included when I was with the state, sometimes you can tend to gloss over something, if you, not gloss over, but you can run over something very quickly. And hope that people don't ask questions and. That happens a lot with this 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 body, so. You got to pay attention, I think that's the most important thing, not saying mark at all, Thompson is definitely not like that. Right, yeah. So. I mean, if you raise enough of a stink, the commissioners will listen to you, that's, I did that with CPI a few years ago, and that's why they did something, because it was pretty aggravated about what they were trying to pull. But, yeah, it is a commitment, I'm not going to lie.
But only through the budget year and then you.
Oh, yeah, yep, then you get summer off. And most of the ball. So it's like a three month commitment. Uh, yeah, but it it's stretched out from basically January through whether it's May, whenever we vote on. Town budget, so it's shortly before that, but.
Are they all in the evening or at night? Most of them are at like five o'clock, which drove me up the wall.
That's a weird time, I don't know, traffic.
And sometimes there are four, but they're online, so the commission, not the commission, the county administrator, the pushy brain person. And then the, there's that one day, full day meeting where you get presentations from all the departments and all the different entities that the county also funds, like the water classification district, the municipal governments. So the county also funds the. Astonishing how many technicals are out there, right? So, yeah, there's, and what is it, porridge, I think they're fun porridge too. Or parts of porridge, so you get county departments, which are mostly emergency management.
I think they're fun porridge too, um, or park porch, so you get county departments, which are mostly emergency management, district attorney, um, uh, and obviously support staff, um, dispatch.
Sure.
Sheriff's, yeah, dispatch, I'm crazy, because we have this right here, but we don't use it.
That wasn't the county's decision, that was the P U C.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, the fact that the sheriffs hang out in Thompson all the time, because of where all the restaurants are in the county, that also drives me a freaking wall.
Extra protection.
Yeah, I, I. I'm, I'm asking the questions because I, I feel like looking at the board.
Yeah.
Appreciating that, being in that spot two years ago, um, and just wanting to get my feet wet, dive in. Having had that opportunity, I feel like it probably would make sense if I volunteered to take that for at least a year so that then the new jacklings can get their feet wet and take over the director. Or, you know, we all take turns, but I think it's something that we should all learn how to do. I'm, I'm hesitant because of the time, but I have that time, that's not an issue. It's worth it to learn something new because it will help benefit our town and it'll be a good strong voice for our town. Um, but the more we know as a board and, you know, we end up gear down the road, changing it out and switching it up, then we'll be more effective and have maybe a little bit more voice over there, so I would volunteer for that. Term is usually longer than a year, but I guess if you sit down and you don't do this again, yeah.
Well, you're turned up whether you're in with you.
Yeah, so I gotta get out of it in again next time.
That works well in this one.
Well, you answered my question, now I'll do it yours. Thank you, Kurt.
Sure, we have a motion.
Yeah, we, yeah, a motion.
I make a motion that Ryan Holmes be appointed Thompson's representative for the SAG-AW County Budget Advisory Committee.
Booty seconded, all in favor?
Uh, it was bad. Didn't say it, but.
Second thoughts, Tim?
No, no, um, I don't think it'll be that bad, I just, Matt's very good with numbers, he's very good at catching the details and knows a good spot for him, I hope I have no issues.
Well, thanks for your service, Matt.
Yeah, I'm not done yet.
This is not like, you know, can't joke, we don't. Well, thank you for volunteering. All right, most anticipated moment of the night?
Oh, Anne's not here, you know, I'll adjourn.
Second.
We adjourned.